Two car garage type homes, but apartments that affect, that are impacting families, but also being foreclosed upon. Do you feel that we have enough of a variety, if you will, of types of buildings so we can learn from this demonstration and figure out how to apply it citywide? Please hold my time.
Councilman, that's a great question, and it all depends ultimately on what kind of dollars are allowed to be used. Let me, for just a moment, we have an issue. The federal dollars for the national, for this neighborhood stabilization program are very specific. The 33 million that we're going to receive shortly have clear limitations. They may only be used for properties, whether they're multifamily or single-family, that have already been foreclosed on. We cannot use CDBG dollars under the current law, or even home dollars, to help anybody other than a first-time homebuyer. So for instance, the program that Mr. Resad is talking about, for helping folks with a $5,000 help down payment and pay for costs, cannot currently be paid by CDBG or home dollars. It is very clearly prohibited. So what we're going to have to wait and see is that the new dollars that are being signed today in the stimulus package, Councilwoman Garcetti was correct, they put back $2 billion. That may be more broadly available, and I'm certainly speaking, and I know many of others of you are as well, to give us more flexibility to actually help homeowners that are currently in homes. Because the regular CDBG rules do not permit it, the home rules do not permit it, and the first NSP program does not permit it. So we need the second bit of money to be more flexible to do that.
This city generates about $4 billion, and banks are holding our money. Banks are making money off our money. Yet these are the same banks who are, we are waiting for to bring down that principle because of the fact that everything's devalued, and we're waiting for them to decide when they would do that, when they make money off of our tax dollars as well?
Well, yes, that's true, but let me also say this. We're in a position that other cities would love to be in, right? If you would go into the Rust Belt of this country, there is absolutely no housing market at all, right? Their values have dropped in the area of 80 percent, completely wiped out. In Los Angeles, we have a housing market.
Thanking and supporting her colleagues, District 3 Councilmember Wendy Gruel offers some advice and encouragement to homeowners.
A special plug to remind people that there are individuals out there who are trying to take advantage of you. Call the Neighborhood Legal Services, Beth Seddick, all the other programs that are out there, and the Housing Department. Many people who say, "I can make your troubles go away and provide you a miracle," usually it's not true. And so we encourage you to call those who actually know how to handle this, but also not be afraid to call your bank. I went to a opening the other day where they were putting together a program where banks are saying they're having a hard time, because people don't want to return their phone calls. There's nothing worse than being the recipient of a phone call that says you haven't paid your bill, and just wanting to avoid it. Don't avoid it. Step up. There are programs out there that we can help work with you, and hopefully the city of Los Angeles additionally will use some of those dollars we have to be able to assist people who are facing foreclosure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, please open the roll then on the item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all very much.
Continuing with the housing theme, Item 9, a motion submitted by Councilmember Jose Wezar, suggests using current or future state and federal housing funds to assist low and moderate homeowners. Mr. Wezar explains some of the details of his motion.
What this motion does is ask that we start preparing a plan in the event that more federal money does come in, so that we do one of two things. One is possibly provide refinancing assistance up to $5,000 for low and moderate income families. And this is even more important, because just today, there was a newspaper article that says that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are raising their fees for people to refinance. So two things are happening opposite each other, where we're having more foreclosures, people would want to refinance but cannot come up with the fees, and Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are raising their fees. So that's even more important that we help people refinance if they so choose. And secondly, to possibly create a soft second, and again, President Obama is expected to announce tomorrow more details on how he hopes, or how the country hopes to help people who are in foreclosure. He's going to make the announcement in Phoenix tomorrow, one of the most hardest-hit cities in the United States with his foreclosures here. Thank you very much.
Seated again at the center table, General Manager of the Housing Department Mercedes Marquez answers questions from District 8 Councilmember Bernard Parks about government loans.
How do we go about, and I'm assuming you're talking about 108 loans and things of that nature, and others that we deal with? How do we go about changing, or at least addressing or bringing that policy forward? Because if I understand it, many of the monies that we put forward to small businesses to help them get creative are now suffering because they can't pay their loans back. So we have all that job creation that now falls on top of the issue of unemployment. I'm just wondering, how do we get in the discussion about those types of federal or government loans?
My sense is that with the $2 billion that was included in the stimulus package, that is Neighborhood Stabilization Program 2, that, the language seems to be more broadly written to allow for some different things. I certainly expect, I can tell you, that I meet with a group of five housing directors for the five high-cost cities in the country. So the cities of New York, Boston, Chicago, Los Angeles, and San Francisco work together on policies that very specifically affect high-cost markets. We have already taken up this question about what it is we should be recommending to the Housing and Urban Development Department in Washington about that money. How is it that it could be more broadly written to permit us, for instance, to do some of the things that are included in Councilwoman Resad's motion? Right now, we could not use that dollars. So we would have to use CRA dollars, use other money. It would be an issue in the budget, frankly, to carve out the kind of money that could do that when federal dollars can't. The other dollars to be looked at, I think, are not traditionally looked at for this purpose. But the federal stimulus also has about $1.5 billion in ESG that is usually used for homeless, but it seems to be a little bit more broadly written so that it may be used as homelessness prevention. So we may be able to take a look at that to help families that are in, to keep them in. So we're going to be studying those very carefully. I can tell you that I am aggressively, along with these other cities, taking a look. We're planning to go in March as five cities to look at this. We're, you know, actually, we're speaking already to Councilwoman Garcetti about this. We're speaking to the mayor's office about all moving together. I've also actually spoken with your staff, as well as Councilwoman Perry's staff, about this, so that we take the right position to help us have some flexibility. Because without it, we're just not going to be able to very effectively deal with the problem.
Homeownership used to be the American dream, according to District 7 Councilmember Richard Alarcon, who believes the problem is that we've allowed Los Angeles to become a rental city.
Members, I hope that we, we understand that we're sort of playing a game of musical chairs unless we deal with the root causes of the problem. I agree with Zuma Dog on the issue of foreclosures as a crisis. But long before there was a foreclosure crisis, there was a crisis in Los Angeles that we have allowed our city to become a rental city. The vast majority of people that live in Los Angeles do not own the home that they live in. And as a nation, we are doing the same thing. The crisis that emerged did not emerge because of the foreclosure problem. The crisis occurred because we have a failure of our work, our working-class community to have the ability, the assets and the collateral to be able to generate consumerism. And unless Los Angeles targets as a goal to increase the proportion of homeownership, we're dancing, we're dancing at the party, and the band is ready to leave. We are not going to be able to solve this problem unless we create more homeownership, unless we provide the opportunity for more people to have an asset that they can rely on, that they can collateralize and purchase other things. That's the way our society works. We are at a state where 70 percent of the people that live in a home in Los Angeles are not living in a home that they own. They have no collateral, they can't buy a car, they can't even buy a refrigerator. Yes, it, we have created this situation before the foreclosure crisis, but what is happening now is we are responding to the foreclosure crisis, we are not responding to the fundamental issues.
Let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you.
And joining us now is District 14 Councilmember Jose Wezar. Mr. Wezar, welcome to Council Week in Review.
Thank you very much, Jack. Happy to be here.
Of course, we all know the housing market is in turmoil, not only in Los Angeles, but across the nation. And your motion on Tuesday consisted, as I understand it, of two parts, refinancing using state and federal funds in a mortgage assistance program. Will the President's stimulus package be of any help here in L.A.?
Well, not as currently designed. We are hoping that they earmark more of that money for preventing foreclosures. We know that the Treasury Department has received some money, and they intend to help homeowners who are losing their homes, to prevent them from losing homes. But right now, what we see, a lot of the federal money, or a lot of the guidelines that direct the federal money, only help homeowners post-foreclosure. And what my motion intended to do was to say, hey, let's prevent people from losing their homes and not come in after the fact. And so that's why I suggest that any new money that comes to cities to help prevent, to help with the foreclosure problem, that $5,000 go to cover refinancing fees, because first of all, these folks who are losing their homes, they would love to refinance, get a lower interest rate, and be able to manage what they're paying monthly for their mortgage, but some of them can't even pay the fees associated with refinancing. And not to mention that just this week, Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae actually are raising their fees. It comes into, becomes more, more important.
Well, obviously Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae are in big trouble as well.
Yes.
Of course, the Housing Department is due to report back in 30 days on how the program might work to actually help homeowners refinance. How do you see the program working, and who do you think would be eligible?
Well, anyone who is near to losing their home or would want to inquire about this, we would see if they qualify, obviously, but we got to remember that between January 2007 and June of 2008, there were about 10,400 multi- and single-family properties that were foreclosed. So we want to lower this number significantly, and what we see is hopefully, the federal government and the federal money that comes in, we want to be prepared with a program that's in place, so when that money comes in, we have that program in place to do more pre-foreclosure efforts throughout the city of Los Angeles. And so it may be with covering the fees, it may be to give these homeowners a soft second, but it would really be, or go towards those families who need the help. And we got to remember, we're not only doing this to help those individual families, but we're doing this to stabilize communities. It doesn't benefit anyone if we see more and more homes boarded up, because then that will start more deterioration in the community and lead to more crime, et cetera. This is about not only saving those families who are hurting, but also saving communities and stabilizing those communities where these homes are in.
When we hear about the federal stimulus package, they keep talking about shovel-ready projects. On the TARP program side that you're talking about, you're talking about mortgage-assistance-ready programs.
Mortgage-assistance-ready programs, yes. It's not the term of art that's now being used about shovel-ready projects. This is more those families who could step forward and show that there's a real need for them to get this assistance. And there's a lot of them out there. I mean, before, it was just a few folks who couldn't afford to make their mortgage payment, but now, you're seeing a lot more folks who have stable jobs, a decent pay, who are falling into this category.
Could you give us a little more detail on how this mortgage assistance program would actually work?
Sure. We would want to have anyone who could, who needs assistance to, once they qualify for refinancing, to be able to show that the current payment that they would make even after they refinance, that they perhaps would need a little help to continue making those payments monthly. And depending on the formulas that we come up with, we would provide an additional loan to these individuals, so that they could make those monthly payments each month up to a certain time, so that after that time expires, hopefully, these folks will be in better footing, and the financial crisis has passed, and they would be able to not only, hopefully, provide for the full amount of the loan they have taken out, but start repaying back the loan to the city if they can at that time.
We've heard about reinvestment of local monies, we've heard about state monies, and you and I were just talking about federal funding as well. Is there currently funding available, or are we waiting for new monies to come in?
We're actually waiting for new monies to come in, because the little money that has been available from the federal government, like I said, that's been for post-foreclosure relief, and there's very little of it. For example, in my district in Bull Heights, we are actually working with a group called East LA Community Corporation that's going into some of these homes that have been foreclosed, and they're working with the city to purchase these properties and rehabilitate them and get them back on the market, so that we stabilize those neighborhoods. What we're looking at is to continue doing some of that, but get new funding, and the direction that is given by my motion is to tell our Housing Department, let's focus on pre-foreclosure, and let's get a program ready, so that when the stimulus money comes in through the Treasury Department, we are ready to hit the ground running and start preventing families from losing their homes.
As you know, the council approved a pilot program for foreclosure prevention in District 7. Do you expect that program to eventually include other districts, and where would be the funding for this limited program coming from?
Well, it actually will help tremendously, because we can learn a lot from that. Along with my motion, that same day, in Council District 7, we passed a motion to use some community redevelopment agency dollars. Now, again, these are local dollars, $1.5 million, to create a pilot project area where we could do a lot of what my motion is talking about, plus other items that could really stabilize that whole neighborhood. So this pilot project is actually a beginning. It's a good thing for us to do, using local money. The local council member there actually wanted to, given the number of foreclosures that have hit that area hard, along with South Los Angeles is another area that's been hit quite, quite hard, we wanted to do something immediately to prevent more homes from going into foreclosure. But then again, that's doing two things. One is, it's using local money, and which we don't have a lot of to continue doing this, this type of work. But secondly, it does some of the pre-foreclosure items that my motion is talking about, such as covering the refinancing fees, perhaps a soft second, plus other items that could, we could hopefully use in other parts of the city. And again, the areas that have been hard-hit are the Pacoima area, the South Los Angeles area, and those are the two areas that have been hit the hardest with these foreclosures.
By the way, for people who don't know, could you explain briefly the soft second mortgages that you're talking about?
Yes, that would actually go towards helping those individuals who do not have additional funding to complete their monthly mortgage payment. And the soft seconds will help these individuals complete their monthly mortgage payment, and it will be a loan, so that eventually, these individuals get in better footing, they would be able to pay the city back with those, those additional dollars we have lent out.
You talked about the fees associated with the refinancing, and we know that there's been a so-called credit freeze around the country. But isn't it still possible to get no-fee, no-points loans in refinancing?
It is. It is possible to get additional benefits right now, but again, we're at record-level low-interest loans. But just covering some of these fees for the transactions themselves, even though you may get a good interest rate, or even there may, there'd be no points, there are other costs associated that are not within the category when they advertise that there are no points that cost money to make these transactions possible. And, you know, these may cost anywhere, you know, from a couple of thousand dollars to $6,000, $7,000, and so we're hoping that we are able to cover this and help people take advantage of lower interest rates if they, if they refinance.
Better read it all before you sign.
Yes, and there's a lot of documents there, too.
Yes.
They're hard to understand, and, you know, that's why the Housing Department's available right now. We've, they're ready to not only help if people are close to being foreclosed, they should call the Housing Department, or even if they are refinancing, call the Housing Department, and we will get them some assistance to make sure that their refinancing is going, is properly being done. Always, we got to watch out for, for people who try to take advantage of others in these needy times, and the Housing Department is here, ready and willing to help those who just call and look us up on the internet to get that advice.
Good advice. What about first-time homebuyers, frankly? Is there any assistance or help for them?
Right now, well, there's always been first-time homebuyer assistance from the Housing Department. We, looking at the housing market, the crisis we are in, you know, that help has always been there, but it seems like preventing foreclosures and helping those projects that are in trouble because of the economic downturn, that's kind of taking precedence over right now. But certainly, the City Council and the City of Los Angeles have a public policy goal of supporting tenants and supporting first-time homeowners, and supporting those tenants to become the first-time homeowners, and that's always been a public policy goal of the city. It stabilizes neighborhoods, and that's what we want to see.
District 14 Councilmember Jose Wezar, as always, thank you for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you so much, Jack.
And again, for information on housing, including buying programs, renting, and renters' rights, and much more, go to the Los Angeles Housing Department's website at lahd.lacity.org. There's also a list of phone numbers that you can call, depending on your housing situation and where you live. And you can get the specific number you need by simply dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending February 20th, 2009. On behalf of Michael Flynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Hi, I'm Antoinette Christovall, Director of Finance for the City of Los Angeles Office of Finance. We are excited about a few changes we have made for the upcoming year in regards to filing the business taxes in the city. We have updated and streamlined the business tax renewal booklet, making it more simplified to use.
Worried that this year's business tax renewal form will be another mind-boggler and stressful task? Too confused about how to fill out the paperwork? Well, don't be. This year, the Office of Finance has redesigned and condensed the business tax renewal form. The number of pages have been reduced and instructions have been simplified, all for you. Simplify this year's stress. Look for the business tax renewal form in the mail starting late December. And for those businesses that filed online last year, you'll receive a reminder postcard instead of the package. Making life a little simpler.
I'm Antoinette Christovall. Thank you so much for watching. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we want to make this process simple and efficient.
For Tuesday, February 24th, 2009, we're here in the John Furrow Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., except for the first Friday of the month when we're in Van Nuys City Hall. City Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues Tony Cardenas, Wendy Gruel, Jose Wezar, Bernard Parks, Jan Perry, Bill Rosendahl, Herb Wesson, and Dennis Ein. We are waiting one more council member to constitute a quorum. Councilmembers should be in their seats for City Council at the beginning of the meeting. That is 10:00 a.m., and it is past that, so the following council members are late. Councilmembers Alarcon, Han, Laban, Reyes, Smith, and Weiss. Please make your way to council chambers right away, so we can begin the meeting. In the meantime, welcome to our guests who are here in council chambers, and also those viewers on Channel 35. Channel 35 broadcasts us live every council meeting and rebroadcasts us each evening as well. We're also available online through the internet at the city's homepage, lacity.org, where you can click on links on the left side and watch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, or archive footage of our past council meetings, as well as our agendas, links to city departments, elected officials, and a wealth of information to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. You also can use your telephone to listen in to our council meetings, or any of the meetings of our council committees. The number to call is 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY, and you can listen in to any of the meetings that we have here, or our council committee meetings. Our agendas, as I mentioned, are available online, or in person at the city clerk's office, or here in city council chambers. Those agendas are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special agenda items. And if you look through the agendas, you can see all the items that are before us today. If you'd like to be heard on any of those items, and they have not yet had a public hearing in committee, that will be automatically triggered by a card from the public, so feel free to fill out a speaker card here, or in our Van Nuys City Hall chambers, and hand that to the sergeant-at-arms. You can also put in speaker cards for other items, but those require a council member to reopen the public hearing if that's been held in committee. Finally, there's a section of our council meetings, which is for general public comment. That's for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city council. So just fill out a speaker card in the back, and hand that forward to one of the sergeants-at-arms, too. We'll be sure to get that in the mix as well. Again, we're just awaiting one more council member, and the following council members are late. Councilmembers Alarcon, Han, are late: councilmembers Alarcon, Han, Labange, Reyes, Smith, and Weiss. As soon as we have one more council member, we will begin. Thank you to members of the public for your patience while we await one of them, and we have Mr. Reyes. So with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zane, Garcetti, ten members present. A quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wezar moves, and Ms. Grul seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All right, if I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for a pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Wezar, if you'd be kind enough to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, please put your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one, the Constitution, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wezar. Next order of business, if we can run through the agenda, please.
Items 1 through 4 are street lighting district ordinances, notice for public hearing. Council should have 12 members today. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold those until we have Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Han, Mr. Smith, or Mr. Weiss. Thank you. Next order of business.
Items 5 through 15 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, items 5 through 15. Colleagues, any specials? Items 5 through 15. Anybody? Mr. Labange, any, 5 through 15?
It's the five special members of the United States Air Force in the front row. Give them a big hand and a welcome.
Thank you. Honored to have you here. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. All right, if there's no special items, then we'll go ahead, and item 13 for...
Two minutes.
Okay, if we have no objection, can we continue that till next Wednesday? That would be a week from the 25th, which is March 4th.
Twelve fourth with.
There's no objection, let's go ahead and continue 13, and Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I would love to hear from our wonderful librarian, as we give her more time.
I thought you might want to call that one special.
You're right, thank you very much. I didn't have my glasses on.
Mr. Wezar.
Number 12, fourth with, please.
Okay, after we vote on that, let's go ahead then and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And without objection, we'll send number 12, fourth with. Next items, please.
Items 16 through 20 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have a card on 16, we'll call that special, for a card from the public, and we'll open and close the other public hearings.
Mr. President, I believe there are cards on 19 and 20 as well.
Okay, 19, 16, 19, you're right, and 20. On 17 and 18, we'll close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call 17 or 18 special? If not, please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items 21 through 23 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, yes.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three, Mr. Reyes. And for 21 and 22, if nobody wishes to call those special?
There, Mr. President, there is a card on 22.
I'm sorry, on 22, we'll call that special for a card from the public. We also have a card from 23, so we'll note that. On 21, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. That will take us to our public comment, and Clyde Williams is our first speaker. Each speaker has two minutes before the council to address us right here at the podium. There's a clock to help guide your time. Is Mr. Williams here? Mr. Clyde Williams, we'll put that aside for a second. Zuma Dog is our next speaker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Labange.
Can I just introduce formally the Air Force guest?
Absolutely, please do. Let us know who's here in chambers.
I'd just like to introduce Sergeant Major, is that correct? Briston, right there, all right there, and Gazetti. He's out working in the Southern California now, and I want to say Lucif.
Rockif.
Very nice there in French. We got that, we got all my here, Riley, Burnett, Alameda, and Benton, Juarez, and Lewis. There's a whole team from the United States Air Force Academy.
Give them a round of applause and thank them for their service.
Give them a welcome here, they play at local public schools, and you know, a great rock band. And can I have one more minute?
Sure, Mr. Labange.
Can we just go over here one more minute? I just want to do this, because there's a very few times if we have that.
Depends for what, Mr. Labange, but go ahead.
Thank you very much for my time there, we go. All right, off we go. Ready?
All right. If everyone else will sing along.
Everybody else will sing along too. Join in. Ready?
Off we go, into the wild blue yonder, climbing high into the sun. Here they come, swimming to me without thunder. Out of my sight, give them the gun, give them the gun. Down we dive, shouting a flame craw under. Off with one, hell of a roar. Living things go down, and hey, nothing can stop you, we're set up for.
Hey! Thank you very much. President, I know you're a Navy man, but we have a representative state of Ohio here, Kansas, right here is Kansas, Vermont, Colorado, and from Brazil.
Thank you.
Which is a great, great country as well, but you're joining the Air Force, the United States Air Force, American citizen. Thank you all, these of them, they served in Afghanistan, served in Iraq, and they serve our country today, and they're serving the Southland by singing at schools and various things. And there's Bill Rosendahl, the veteran. Bill, please.
All right. I just want to salute you all very much. You woke us all up this morning, and I want to thank you very much for serving our country the way you do. God bless you all, and God bless America.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate that. We have 12 members, if we can take up the ordinances, 1 through 4. Please open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved, and Mr. Zuma Dog, if you'd like to come forward. Thank you, Mr. Dog.
Yes, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Labange. He says I should start calling myself David, it sounds more mayoral. And I'd like to say, I just learned a PR lesson, I just got PR, I just got the PR parade stolen out from under me by Tom Labange. What the people at home don't know, ABC 7 Eyewitness News is here in chambers right now, documenting Zuma Dog and his mayoral candidacy, and I was just about ready to go, and Tom goes, "Oh, can I go first?" So now the KABC News crew got Tom Labange doing his good thing. So yes, yes, the senior campaigner stole my thunder, thank you. But I'd also like to, oh, by the way, there could be a runoff. Is there anybody that would be willing to bet their entire life savings that there will not be a runoff between Villarosa and Zuma Dog? Oh, I will take that bet, okay? You know that there could be a runoff. Thank you to Bill Handel, KFI, this morning I was on there. He said, "Well, I'd just as soon vote for you as Villarosa." That means a lot to me. Thank you for Councilmember Dennis Ein for saying, "Zuma Dog has done a lot of good things for the city of L.A., and that he's a good man." I appreciate all the council members' comments who don't want to go on camera. Thank you to Doug McIntyre for mentioning, gee, you got a guy like Zuma Dog who's come here, and now he's seriously challenging the mayor. Thank you to Eyewitness 7. Eyewitness 7, KABC News. Thank you to Rob Hayes for being here, for covering this, and thank you to LA Times. What a privilege to have Zuma Dog, who's come here for three years, woken up, and people, Bill Handel asked me, "Well, gee, what do you do for a living? Where do you live?" And people have questioned about, you know, my profession. Let me tell you something, somebody who has had nothing, who crawls out of his vehicle and comes down here to fight against the fraud, waste, and abuse, laws have been changed, laws are being followed, I think everyone would agree, Zuma Dog has came out here and really done something under the First Amendment, changed history. So you know what? Don't worry about how much money I have, don't worry about what I do, I do everything right here, and now I'm here to put it on the ballot, to allow voters to continue this. I want to crack down on the fraud, waste, and abuse. Nobody's done more as a single individual that's up for reelection, including the mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker.
My name is Clyde Williams, I live at 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, CD 14, forsaken by the mayor for his current post. Has anyone ever had statistics? It seems that the Huron Report for DWP was done by somebody who is not qualified in statistical analysis. Number one, there's no information provided to show that it is a normal distribution of their cost factors. Number two, they do not use the standard confidentiality terminology of level rather than interval. Confidence is a key element. It's not 90% of the observed range. Okay, to take the midpoint, the midpoint of the ranges would give you a better indication as to the mean, mode, and median. However, they use the word "expected value," that is, expected by the DWP. Stochastics. Stochastic analysis is in fact Monte Carlo analysis, which was the basis of the subprime mortgage problem, bonds, and a few other things. Monte Carlo does work, it's used by many people, I've used it myself. Thus, there's no confidence in the Huron Report. It uses skewed values. It uses non-normal analytical approaches to get to the expected results wanted by DWP. There are probably expected values, if not required values, which should not be used to grab money from the unions and to call Angelino's account for another $3 billion.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Our next speaker is in Van Nuys, Donna Perman. Good morning.
Good morning. Anyway, I heard Zuma Dog on KFI, and I thought he did quite well. So well, in fact, that Bill Handel said that he would rather vote for Zuma Dog than Villarosa. Secondly, I feel sorry for a man running against Eric Garcetti. He looks intelligent, put him in Council 5, and he's a shoo-in, but not 13. Vote for Eric for Council 13, we still need him. Last minute to tell you my opinion on voting. I would vote no on Prop A, B, C, E. As for B, I am for solar power, but not for the way this is written. I don't want to chance my electric bills doubling or more, and the secret memo was false, prove it. Nowhere do they help the homeowners get inexpensive solar power, unless you're Councilman Smith. I'm sure President Garcetti has solar power, and with a heavy heart, though not the first time, I disagree with President Garcetti, and we'll vote no on B. A good rule of thumb is that the councilmen are for it, vote no on it. They live in a rich man's world, and have no qualms if the taxes go up, rates go up, look at the way they give the money to the CRA, our tax increment money, and our fee waivers. I would vote against Villarosa. Our city really fell apart with him in the helm. Vote for someone who's for the people. If you want to vote for Jack Weiss, remember our 20,000 constituents voted to recall him in the Westwood area, probably over 40,000 felt that way. Do we vote for him just because Council 5 doesn't want him anymore? I would vote for Noel Weiss. He has plans to listen to Angelino's. Does Councilman Weiss listen to anyone that contributed to his campaign, or who was wealthy, or not another councilman? I think not. It is true, our council, one of our councilmen on the city council said to vote against him? Possible. We need to take our city back from our stuffy councilmen, and away, and to stop the CRA, stop home foreclosures, help our middle class, help our city employees, they deserve it, not just the DWP. Does Prop P help city employees in sanitation? So therefore, look at these things very carefully, and ask yourself, do you want to spend more money, and do you want these councilmen vote up for reelection? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is here in council chambers, Richard Kearns. After that will be Yolanda Gonzalez.
Good morning, President Garcetti, distinguished council members. I've given the clerk a copy of my prepared remarks. My name is Richard Kearns, I'm a 57-year-old gay AIDS activist and long-term survivor, a medical cannabis patient and advocate, a poet and journalist. I'm here this morning with three specific suggestions to move along the medical cannabis ordinance process, but first, I want to take us on a quick metaphoric foray into pop culture. I don't know if you're aware of this, but Marvel Comics has come out with a special inauguration day edition of The Amazing Spider-Man with President Obama on the cover. In it, a shape-shifting supervillain named Chameleon disguises himself as the real Obama, and hopes to be sworn in as president by mistake. Even the comic book Obama noted, honestly, I'm more upset by the Chameleon's shockingly deficient understanding of the electoral process. I think the Chameleon has escaped. I think he's wandering around our city attorney's office, disguised as one of us, trying to work the same scam with medical cannabis ordinance. We need a city attorney, not a comic book supervillain with a deficient understanding of the process. Lacking one, here are my three suggestions to move the medical cannabis regulation process along in Los Angeles. One, reject the third city attorney draft. It was written to be an unacceptable response, capriciously provocative, whose clear intent is not to save lives, but to wreck the ordinance writing process. Two, move ahead and adopt the ordinance as drafted by the working group. Three, establish a volunteer community advisory board for oversight, fine-tuning, and to handle administration of the ordinance. Think of it as an embryonic, metaphoric neighborhood council, potentially representing different components of our medical cannabis stakeholder community in self-governing, self-administrating body. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Yolanda Gonzalez is our next speaker, and then DeeDee Audit.
Good morning, City Council, Yolanda Gonzalez, from Boyle Heights, a stakeholder and a resident of Venice, and my team is here today. I just want to congratulate us Venice people, because we got our OPD, and we had over 1,500 people show up, so that means we're hot. Venice was the grassroots of neighborhood councils, and I was part of it. I'm here to, and please, deplore you, examine Measure B. I am a solar panel owner, and if none of you have it, and haven't spent the money, then you have no idea what the expenditure is on. I am embarrassed at my mayor, because he doesn't want to challenge Measure B on debate. I'm here also to discuss another issue that we have, is the marijuana permits that are being issued through our city. And Bill, I have asked you, through my representative of city, because we had five raids in Venice, and it's getting out in our east side, to our Latinos that are 21 and 22 years old because of depression and anxiety. It was supposed to be given for people that have terminal disease or very serious disease, not to people or our kids that are going to become potheads. I came from the era of potheads. '68, '69, and '70. I know what it does, because I see the ramification of my students at the age of 60. Think about it. And I'm here also to discuss another issue that we have. Jose, the...
If you can please, please address the council as a whole. Thank you.
Right. The issue of the liquor licenses going into Boyle Heights, where we have the highest rate of liquor licenses, and we have a depression, and we have people losing their jobs, and they're grabbing the tequila, and they're grabbing the Bacardi, is not the issue.
Thank you very much.
We want to protect our neighborhoods.
Thank you. DeeDee Audit is our next speaker, and after that will be Lucille Caruso.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm here today to tell you I'm for solar, and I'm for jobs, but Measure B is a scam based on a phony tax shelter. Here, in the voter information pamphlet, on page 42, is section 23.162, and that describes what the Internal Revenue Service is now calling a listed transaction. Here is the Huron Report, which is based on that phony tax shelter. This report was paid for by you with ratepayers' money, and it claims that the phony tax shelter will save money for ratepayers. It's not going to happen that way, and ratepayers will be stuck again, just like they were stuck before with expensive boondoggles by DWP. Environmentalists and unions may be excused, because they've been fooled into supporting a measure that will not fly. They can be excused, but the city of Los Angeles, if it doesn't know better, it ought to begin to learn now. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl, did you, Mr. Rosendahl, had you pressed your button? Was that from before? Okay. Lucille Caruso is our next speaker. After Ms. Caruso is Solidad Garcia.
Good morning.
Hi. Sometimes I get reluctant to speak, because this is kind of a little bit controversial, so then you get... of a little bit controversial, so then you get reluctant. So you want to use the right words so it comes across correctly. And I don't know if I have those right words, but I'm going to try my best, okay? And it's about, you know that measure that's yes to no when nobody yes, or whatever it is? And I know sometimes you say, Lucy, why are you going back to the '60s books here that you have? Well, I lived it, first of all. But somewhere, I'm not from, I'm from Midwest, and somewhere in the Midwest and somewhere over here, it's not, I feel like we're more advanced or something. And that's not a put-down because we're different states and everything like that. But, you know, when I go through the '60s stuff, I don't have the, you know, I want to word it right, I'm going to stop there. I think I'll stop there. We were brought up with a different philosophy that, oh God, I don't know how to say it. It's brought up in a philosophy that it's the women's movement that started this kind of liberation. And in that liberation, it goes through this thing where it goes into all this. And I feel maybe, maybe it's because I'm from Chicago or something like this, but I feel nobody's supporting my end of this deal. I'm straight, you know, and I want to come back to that because I need to clarify that more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Solidad Garcia. After that is the Reverend Howard Dodson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Solidad Garcia, from Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council and president of the DWP Committee. Good morning, Mr. President, and members of the council. Your three-figure salaries and that of DWP are paid by the middle class, basically, of Los Angeles. The unconscionable rush to place the Measure 3 ballot on March 3rd is going to have a fantastic impact on the ratepayers. They will be paying two to three times their current rate. Not even today are the specific plans or the costs, which could be between $1 and $3 billion, before you or before the community. It is the responsibility of the council to ensure that the community does not become bankrupt. Your constituents should be cushioned against further taxation by DWP, the city, and the union. Today, DWP customers have the highest rate of non-payment. I would urge you not to allow the Huron Report, as you've just heard, to be further distributed. It is flawed, and it could cause the city fantastic damage. It could even be a Huron debacle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Reverend Howard Dodson is next, then we'll go back to Van Nuys, and McKnightengale will follow. Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcetti and council members. I'm here today to share with you some follow-up to a public safety item we had about a year ago, and I appreciate Councilman Reyes's leadership on this issue. Chief Bratton several years ago gave a directive to have a clergy council established in every division of LAPD. And this is a follow-up in the fact that there are several divisions that are struggling to get a clergy council. I'm a psychologist, and I'm a Presbyterian minister, and I served in West LA, and I served in Rampart. And I've worked with over 30 families after a gang-related homicide, providing pastoral care to the family. The last eight months, I've been in St. Paul, but I'm still working with the Rampart Clergy Council because the tears and sobs of those grieving moms haunt me because I know that many of these mothers and many of these families are not getting the emotional and spiritual support they need. When there's a homicide, it takes seven to 10 days for the body to be released from the county morgue. And so the funerals are happening 10 days after the homicide. So we have this gap. And so I'm working with HRC, Crisis Response Team, and Grid, to try to figure out a way to bring more clergy to the table so that when we have a homicide, the Crisis Response Team has a roster of clergy that they can refer to, to walk with these families. There are critical psychological risk factors that these families face when they don't get immediate crisis counseling. So today at 2:00 at Rampart Station, we will have Empowering Clergy as Crisis Counselors. And I've counseled some of the community relations offices that when you bring clergy to the table, you need to give them something, you need to have a carrot. And that's how you can reactivate clergy councils, ones that are inactive and ones that need to be formed. And I've shared the training manual I prepared with every member of the Public Safety Committee. And my hope is that other divisions can replicate this model.
Thank you, Reverend. Appreciate it. Mr. Reyes?
May, Council President, I want to thank Reverend Dodson. It's rare when you have a person who could literally step out of their traditional roles, question how authority functions for the sake of these parents, the moms, that are grieving in such a critical moment, when your son or daughter is shot and killed and lays dying on the street, and the parent can't get to their child, and the person's talking to them, don't speak their language, or don't understand their culture. To have that moment in time be nurtured in such a way where a certain type of healing can begin because of Reverend Dodson's efforts and the folks who have paid attention to this very critical moment. Angelinos will further be grateful, so I want to thank you, Reverend Dodson, for never giving up. I want to thank the mayor's office and those who were responding to such a critical moment. It makes a change, great change in people's lives. So thank you very much. Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And thank you very much, Reverend, for your great work. Appreciate it. Rick Nightengale is our next speaker, and he is in Van Nuys, and we'll come back here for Charles McPherson. McPherson.
Good morning, Rick Nightengale. Just regarding a little thing with Mr. Alakon, regarding his area that he wants to put out, he wanted the council to approve, and I believe he did, quarter of a million dollars to turn around and help the people with their payments for their houses and foreclosures. Even the stock market is disagreeing with the president and everything else regarding this. 96% or 94% of the people pay their things on time. 6% don't, as they say. Who knows about percentages? It's all a guesswork, anyway. But still, why should you turn around and we shouldn't turn around? And I hate to say it, help them, because everybody is in dire need of money, the state, the city, and everything else. But you people just keep spending the money. I'll tell you, I'm sorry, but you've got to protect us, the people that are law-abiding with paying our payments and so forth. The banks are in a lot of trouble, and it was their fault. This happened in the '70s, if you remember, and they swore it would never happen again, when property values just skyrocketed, and that's when Prop 13 came in. They're even up in Sacramento trying to get Prop 13 in there now and saying it's unconstitutional because people that have owned their homes for 20 and 30 years, their taxes are a lot lower than the people are there. Prop 13, everybody is on Prop 13 from the day they buy their house. That's the way it is. People don't know that, but you are. You pay one and a quarter percent or one and a half percent from the time you buy your house. I was one of the ones that turned around, I owned a house a long time ago, and I bought another house about nine years ago, and it tripled. That's my fault because I wanted to do that. But since when you think that you have to help them out and then take the money from the rest of the people, it's wrong. I'm sorry, it's just flat wrong. You turn around, even they're trying to, they're trying about this, the 13th, is trying to say that they're trying to get it away. You people better get smart and change, start voting against the Democrats and want to give everything away. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightengale. Charles McPherson is next, and then Walter Bechtel.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shalley McPherson. I live in Venice, at 738 Howard Street. I am pleased to serve on the Venice Neighborhood Council, but I am here as a stakeholder, not as a representative of the VNC. This gentleman is something we all are seeing ad nauseam. This is a DW report which agrees with a hidden report. There are three reports. There's the DWP, there's the PA Consulting, and there's the Huron. This one. According to the LA DWP staff, recent bids for in-bas and photovoltaic or PV solar energy systems are averaging $7,500 per direct current kilowatt. Using the PV watts model, if a solar PV project were funded by LA DWP, our DWP, at its current cost of funds with total installation costs assumed at $7,500 per kilowatt amortized over a 24, 25-year asset life, and assuming no O and M cost, the price of solar power would be approximately 45 cents per kilowatt hour, or get this, three to four times LA DWP's current retail electricity prices. The latter notwithstanding, LA DWP will aggressively seek ways to lower the cost of the Green Energy and Good Jobs Initiative by taking advantage of economies of scale, design, and installation, citing of projects to optimize the solar resource, and by taking advantage of merging solar technologies whenever possible. The estimated total project cost of the 400 MW Green Energy and Good Jobs Initiative could range from as low as $1.5 billion, assuming availability of the aforementioned efficiency measures, to in excess of $3.0 billion, based on an estimated cost of $7,500 per kilowatt. And I made it.
Thank you. Very well timed. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker, and then Mr. Anthony.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. I wanted to come back to reiterate something. I don't sure if you people understood what I said before about intellectual property theft. So I'm going to quote again from 2 Samuel 12, Chapter 12, 4, paragraph 4, and the start of paragraph 4. It says there in the last clause, "But took the poor man's land and dressed it for the man that was come to him. And David's anger was greatly kindled against the man, and he said to Nathan, 'As the Lord liveth, the man that hath done this thing shall surely die; and he shall restore the lamb fourfold, because he did this thing and because he had no pity.' And Nathan said to David, 'Thou art the man.'" I think that pretty much says what's going on here. You can't just switch the proverbial license plate on somebody else's intellectual property, put it on you and say it's yours, and give each other awards here in your city here. You pat each other on the back, and you refuse to do anything, and when I come up to say something, your city attorney laughs at me, makes faces at me, and he tries to interrupt. I will, I came back also because my father wanted to know what the city attorney's name is. He wants me to find out who this city attorney is. Because there's still a lack of action, and that refusal to act is, means that you people designate these people to not do something. It's your responsibility when you don't.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Mr. Anthony is our next speaker. After that is Pat Dixon. Good morning.
Good morning, City Council members. Last week, Friday, I spoke on the salaries of our council members here. A point of clarity was raised afterwards. I'd like to read from the LA Daily dated October 16, '08, four months ago. Listen, viewers, I don't have to make this stuff up. A little research will show you, your eyes don't lie. What you see is what you get. The facts are right there for public viewing. It reads, "The sky-high LA City Council salaries are thanks to a few obscure lines added to the very fine print of the LA City Charter and was approved by unsuspecting voters several years ago. In the very, very fine print of the reform, City Council salaries were forever tied to the pay raises given to Superior Court judges. I may add, some judges feel this is illegal." It goes on. "Ever since, their pay has skyrocketed, making the $150,000 the council members earned just three years ago look cheap. I may also add, these pay raises are automatic every year. On Friday, Councilmember Smith, you stated that this was done over two decades ago? 2005 is not two decades ago. The voters didn't write this or put this on the ballot. The reason you probably forgot was maybe you approved this reform and signed off on it. But that's for another day."
Sir, if you could address the council as a whole, please. Thank you.
But that's enough about pay raises. It gets better. Coincidentally, viewers, it gets better. Remember Measure R back in 2006, two and a half years ago? Again, by deceiving the voters with language in Measure R that not even the best lawyers in the country could interpret or understand, that's the measure that extended city term limits from two terms to three terms, from eight years to 12 years. Both the City Charter reform and Measure R were approved by the mayor. Do you think?
Go ahead, if you'd like to finish your sentence.
Yes. Viewers, do you think these were designed by the mayor to get yes people? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pat Dixon is our next speaker. After that will be Maria Hernandez.
Hi. My name is Pat Dixon. I'm a displaced apartment owner, apartment, I lived at the Alexandria Hotel, and I lived in an apartment, there was a big apartment, and they moved me up to a small apartment. They doubled my rent, and I'd like to know why it took you three years to give me the money that I'm getting now And I deserve better, and, you know, the tenants across the city deserve better. And we're required by law for a reason. Instead, you spent our tax dollars defending the lawsuit that could have been avoided. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate your comments today. Maria Hernandez is our next speaker, and Donna King. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Maria Hernandez, and I was displaced from Alexandria, Tena, and when we asked for help, nobody helped us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Donna King is our next speaker. After that is Steve Diaz.
My name's Donna King. I lived at Alexandria, probably about seven years. I was displaced. At least you could have done a lot better. I loved staying there. I miss it now. Could have done a lot better. You could, could have at least. My sister fell. She fell down three flights of steps. You could have at least helped, done a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Steve Diaz.
Yes, my name is Steve Diaz, and I'm with the Los Angeles Community Action Network, LA CAN. LA CAN comes to you today with displaced Alexandria tenants to remind you of a federal lawsuit that was just settled, that you guys signed a couple months, a couple weeks ago, for race and disability discrimination. The people that you just saw right here were some of The people that you just saw right here were some of the people that were displaced at the hands of Amberland. And these were the stories that we came for you, we came in front of you for the last three years talking about that was going to happen. It shouldn't have taken, it shouldn't have taken a lawsuit, and it shouldn't have taken the city spending money on a lawsuit for the City Council to intervene on behalf of tenants. Tenants in the city of Los Angeles deserve better, and tenants will continue to come before you if race and disability continues to be an issue. We're displaced Alexandria tenants, and we ask that this not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Isis is our next speaker, and after that will be Michael Carrion.
Good morning.
Good morning. Translator, please.
Translators are for folks who don't speak English, ma'am, and I know that you've come before us and spoken English, so if you could please address us in English. It's just for folks who don't have that capacity. We want to make sure that translator stays there, so if you could address us in English. Thank you very much, Ms. Isis.
Yeah, well, if the attorney doesn't mind, that's fine. He's able to understand. Hello, I'm Isis Sage, Director of Justice League for Benevolence.org. In this new moon, I urgently place a shout-out to all concerned citizens, inclusive of LA CAN, Los Angeles Coalition, LAMP organizations, assisting Angelenos on low-recourse civic and humane matters, local and non-local downtown unions, individuals, activists, and humanitarians. Let's join forces in large groups as soon as possible, getting together here before the LA City Council and elsewhere. Let's boldly communicate all of the ways we are misled, discriminated, disregarded, intimidated, devalued, to say the least. Let's vote in a new mayor that truly is for the well-being of Angelenos and who roots for the underdog, like Zuma Dog. Together, at the rise of the waxy moon, let's holistically manifest healthy horizons for Los Angeles. Healthier environments, healthier people, healthier and happy citizens, encouraging Angelenos to thrive and prosper. Benevently, it's the year of the ox and the year of the underdog. That brings ethical triumph to Angelenos. Estimados hispanos y Angelenos en general, no se dejen llevar por el alcalde Viragrosa. Corruptamente, él con su política debile la gente, y hace poco y muy tarde. Gobierno, él gobierna como un fantasma y espanta la gente. Cobardemente, no se afrenta a nuestros disgustos con los candidatos alcalde.
Thank you very much. Michael Carrion.
No se dejen permitir...
Our next speaker, thank you, Isis. Our next speaker is Michael Carrion. Mr. City Attorney?
Just to make the record, the Council President asked that speaker to speak in English, and she complied.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Carrion?
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. And we continue to raise taxes and everything on our citizens here, and we continue to get less service. If the council people who are talking might want to listen to this because it happens to do it with their districts, but I guess what they have to talk about is more important. I go back to police enforcement. This year or last year, I called the police on a hit-and-run. They wouldn't come out. They said to come to the police department. They were too busy. I called the police department on a breaking and entering theft. They wouldn't come out. They were too busy. I called the police department on my tags were stolen off my car. They wouldn't come out because they were too busy. Yet I tried to go to Hollenbach Police Department, and there is no parking there. You can't park anywhere because all the police cars are parked in the fire hydrants, in the handicap, double parked, parked in the middle of the street. So when you guys get your numbers, your numbers are out of a Crackerjack box because there's a lot more crime going on there that is not being reported. I reported, I called and reported yesterday, Friday, my daughter was coming home from school, and two thugs were following her. They followed her all the way up to the driveway. So I'm here to let you guys know, I know Ms. Han and Mr. Laban are too busy talking so they don't hear, but I personally will take legal matters into my own hands. I'm as mad as hell, and I won't take this from nobody. You can say what you want about my language, but I'm tired of this crap. I will become the vigilante of 2009 when it comes to protecting my daughter because the police officers are too busy at Winchalls or having, protecting the mayor for his affairs. I'm tired as hell, and I won't take this shit. I'm going to protect my daughter at whatever cost I have.
Sir, I'd ask you to please...
I'm in good attention!
Sir, I'd ask you not to use that language, and your time is over. Thank you, Mr. Carrion. We have children, others who watch this, so we please ask you to please, we hear you, and you can express your anger. Sir, sir, you're done. Sir, you're done right now. If you'd please not use that language. Thank you very much. All right, that will close our general public comment. We will go to items called special. Mr. Weiss has asked for item 23 out of order. Mr. Reyes called special. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I, this is about extending the ICO regarding the billboards. I thank my colleagues for this extension. I rise to speak to let you know that the Planning Commission has engaged this issue on two meetings. They need more time to work through some of the details. And I also want to emphasize that we did a verbal motion that you supported in which we want to actually create a vehicle in which we can bring down the illegal billboards, look at a legal instrument that allows building and safety to work with Public Works, so that Public Works can actually take down the illegal billboards and set up a system of fines that recovers the cost and essentially puts the property owner and the sign company accountable for their actions. So this extension allows us to continue to vet out these details. We know there's a lot of legal issues involved, but on top of that, we want to fold in the enforcement part so that we can have real action and not wait for these billboards to continue to proliferate throughout the city and actually have real consequences for the illegal billboards. So I want to thank you for your support and I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you. Before we hear from Mr. Weiss, Mr. Zion, for a quick introduction, I know we have some special guests in chambers. Mr. Zion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have them please stand there in the audience. St. Mills Adele Club, the Adele Group that's here with us. They came from St. Mills Catholic Church in my district. We provided a bus, 42 wonderful folks from my district. They're going from here to the City Hall. They're going to go to Philippi's, enjoy the day here in downtown Los Angeles. So on behalf of the LA City Council, to all you Fine Valley folks, St. Mills Adele Club, welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. Official welcome for you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion, and thanks for bringing them in, and welcome everybody to City Council, democracy that's most vibrant. We appreciate you being here. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to thank you, Mr. Reyes, because you've been very strong as plum chair on this issue, and I remember that hearing we had a few months ago that really lit a fire under the need for the ICO, and that was only brought forward on an urgent basis because you viewed it as an urgent matter. And so thank you for that. And I also want to thank Mr. Garcetti, who has been very strong on this, who co-presented the motion with me. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. Colleagues, we have a lot to thank our city departments for today because when we put forward the ICO, we did it as a three-month ICO, not as a six-month ICO, because we wanted the departments to understand the need and the urgency to draft new legislation now. We didn't want to see it get put off, and that was somewhat of a controversial decision. But in fact, what the departments have been doing is working urgently to draft the permanent billboard ban now, and they've been doing that. So we owe them a debt of gratitude. Is it finished yet? No. Perhaps it's not reasonable for it to be finished yet, and I don't have a concern with that. I know Mr. Reyes doesn't as well. What matters is that they are working hard, they're working their way through the issues. So this ICO will give them, the Planning Commission, and also on Plum, the opportunity to come up with sustainable legislation that can pass court-muster. But make no mistake about it, this city is suffering now under an onslaught from not just the billboard companies, an onslaught from the super graphics folks. They are wrapping tall buildings in a single bound, day after day, and we need to give the communities of our city some relief before the architecture of this city rapidly dissolves into advertising. That is why this is so urgent. One thing that is critical moving forward is that we dramatically increase the penalties for violations of these code sections. Right now, crime pays. There is no incentive right now to comply with these laws because the punishment is much less significant than the amount of money you earn for committing the crime. So I hope the Planning Commission dramatically, dramatically increases the size of the penalties. If they don't, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Weezer and I will when it gets to Plum. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. We have some cards from the public. Before Mr. Rosenthal goes, we'll hear first from Zuma Dog, and then Dennis Hathaway.
Yes, Zuma Dog, and I am speaking as candidate for Mayor of Los Angeles on the ballot March 3rd. And of course, we need this ordinance because as I was gathering signatures, speaking to thousands of people throughout the city, a lot of them asked me about, gee, what about all these billboards? They're not supposed to be in my backyards, are they? But here's what I need to bring to the attention of the City Council and the city attorney and the constituents. You can make all the rules and ordinances you want. They already had them in place. These billboards by clear-channel digital flashing UFO billboards have popped up all over in violation of the law. The city attorney's office and Vera Gosa turned a blind eye to this. So yes, pass this ordinance. Yes, make all the fines higher. Yes, Zuma Dog is mayor. I would sign the ordinance that increases the penalties significantly for the operators of these fraudulent billboards. I'd just like to say, though, follow the law. You could have done this all along.
Our next speaker is Dennis Hathaway. After that is Jim McQuiston. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Dennis Hathaway. I'm president of the Coalition to Ban Billboard Blight. I support the extension of this ICO. I've gotten a lot of emails and a lot of calls from people who want to know how this new sign ordinance is going to affect them, and I think this time will be very valuable in getting community input and feedback to the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission can really make a very educated decision on this. I also want to point out that, as per the LA Times article last week, there are companies putting up super graphic signs in blatant violation of the ICO. In fact, in one of those cases, or several of those cases, these were buildings owned by CIM Group, which is getting subsidies from the city and engaging in apparently illegal activity. And I want to really urge that the City Council send a strong message to the CRA and to the city attorney to investigate that to the fullest extent, and if there is illegal activity involved there, that the people who are involved in it be punished to the full extent of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a note of information on that, we have, sir, and one of them has come down. I know one in my district. I know Mr. Laban is dealing with ones that have about five in his district, but we absolutely have, and I'll say that again publicly, and we appreciate that. Jim McQuiston, and then Will Wright is next.
Jim McQuiston. I must say, on Vine Street, in the middle of Hollywood, almost at Hollywood and Vine, the Group W building there actually put large, large signs in the middle of Vine Street on city streets. I had to get the building's safety and the city attorney to get those signs off of the street. Yesterday, they put up huge super graphics, off-site signs on the Group W construction project there. That is another example. They're CRA financed. We have to do something about that. But I must say, in all due respect, that we do have the Fifth Amendment, and there is a problem with those kinds of signs going up on property. Unless we see that it is a safety item, we have to remember that the zoning code was built on the premise of police power of the city, which means we have to put a safety reason why they have to go up or have to come down, and that is very, very difficult to find. So we do have to remember that. However, myself, I think those signs are so ugly, but then, of course, beauty lies in the eye of the beholder, and we cannot say for sure which way the city is going to go. I hope that people come to their senses, but on the other hand, maybe they don't.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. Will Wright is our last speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Will Wright. I work for the American Institute of Architects, and we definitely here to support the extension of the ICO. Just wanted to say a few words. This is not just a policy issue, this is a design issue, and we really have to take a moment to think, what do we want our city to look like? We are asking the Planning Commission to slow down and to provide a visual analysis of some of the impacts that the revised ordinance will have on the way our city looks. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosenthal.
I would like the city attorney's office and building and safety to please come forward to the desk in front. I'd like to ask them some questions. Hold my time.
Mr. Rosenthal, I have notified our attorneys to come in. They were under the impression this was just a extension of the ICO that we've been working on.
Yeah, good. I hope they show up before I finish speaking. David, I want to thank you first of all for when we did it with Dennis Hathaway in our district. We found 563 billboards, of which 34 were illegal and 20 had flipped to digital. I know that the fifth district, one of the candidates there, also fanned out and was trying to get a catalog on it. Is there any update as this process of moratorium goes on on what happened in our district? I know you've been looking at it.
Well, I just found out about this right now, sir, but we are checking on that, so I can get some more detailed info, information back to you. We have been diligently pursuing the program to this date on a citywide basis. We have inspectors in place which are actually doing, performing the actual surveys, and we have met actually with the various council offices to inform them of where we're at with the program and what the program is. So at this time, that's what I have for you.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And obviously, we want this extension of the moratorium so that we can sort things out and actually move in the right direction. But the two biggest issues for me are those that have the illegal signs up there now. What are we going to do with those 34 in my district for compensation to the city? How did they get them up? And what kind of revenue streams do they get? And what money can we, the city, get, which we should get? And then the second big issue, as we go through this moratorium, I want to know, the flipping to digital, what revenue streams we can get out of that flip to digital, not just posting the billboard there and paying a nominal amount, but there should be a revenue stream for the city attached to those that have already flipped digital as we go through this moratorium. Those are those issues I want to see. And third, there are groups still putting signage up. What action are we taking to stop them, especially those super graphics that wake up in the morning and you see another super graphic? Can you get involved in that at this point, in this moratorium?
Yes, yes, we do, and we are. Those super graphics that, excuse me, that have gone up since the moratorium became in place, we are diligently pursuing those towards enforcement, working collectively with the city attorney's office.
Okay. Well, the next time we have another discussion on this, I'd love to get an update specifically on my district, where we are on the digital flip and revenue stream, as well as the 34 illegal that are up there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zion.
Yes, Mr. President, a gentleman brought up the question about a company that's getting CRA funds, and I think that there's an issue, and I support Mr. Reyes on this particular measure, the extension, of a company, a developer that's getting CRA funds that is violating the rules along these lines. Maybe there's something else that we can extend into it, because I've seen exactly what you're talking about, the raps. If the CRA is helping fund their projects and they're violating the rules, maybe we can use that as an additional tool, that the funding will be temporarily stopped until they get compliance. If it's a developer that's not linked to the city in any way, shape, or form, but it troubles me, the company you mentioned, I know is receiving CRA funds in many parts of the city on their projects, which is an area, and I defer to Mr. Reyes, that maybe we can utilize that as another tool to convince them to follow the rules and not violate the law, since they are getting city funds for their projects. So I don't know if that would be an amendment, a suggestion, whatever Mr. Reyes feels is appropriate with it, but the gentleman suggested, I think it's a great idea.
We can fold that in. We'll fold that in.
Fold that in, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Mr. Zion, or Ms. Perry, would you mind switching out with me for a second?
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Zion. I know that company is working in Mr. Laban's district, and your district, and my district, and some other ones, and I called them about a week and a half ago. My office has been working for about four weeks with constituents in some of the buildings where, for safety reasons, and we appreciate what Mr. McQuiston said, for safety reasons, folks who not only had rented office space that were under, or residential space under a certain impression, but felt very unsafe with these super graphics that were put up there. It was actually not CRA leverage, but Mills Act money, which we had under state law. They were getting a 12.5% tax credit because it was in the old SAG building that Ronald Reagan, when he was president of SAG, was in on Hollywood Boulevard. That came down. We passed earlier this week a change to the Hollywood Supplemental Use District, which actually closed one of the loopholes that's being used on other buildings, which was that for 120 days, and this predated me, the special temporary event provisions, which allowed, basically it was supposed to be for movie premieres, entertainment-related signage for 120 days to be up. And that was being done in a way that people were, right now, there's a Puff Daddy cologne ad, which, you know, you can stretch and say that's entertainment because Puff Daddy's an entertainment... Puff Daddy's an entertainer. But in my book, that is not entertainment purposes. And we've closed that loophole to make that now prohibited. We saw that happening with historic buildings. One of them was the historic Roosevelt Hotel, where they had put that up. And Architectural Integrity Point is a very important one. It doesn't just exist with older buildings. It exists with modernist buildings, too. People think just because a building is a modernist cube, that somehow that that's okay for super graphics. It is not. And we're working diligently on each one of those to come down. And I told the head of CIM, those have to come down. I know some of them concern Mr. Labonge's district, and he claimed, well, we had it approved just before the moratorium. That's something for them to appeal to Building and Safety Commission, not for us. And it is certainly not an excuse to then break the law and to put up five super graphics, or however many are on the building that I know Mr. Labonge is working very diligently on as well. They're in other parts of the district, and it shouldn't just apply to them, because a lot of the time, we've been talking about the billboard companies in here, these are the property owners as well. And I know it's a tough time, and property owners are saying, we're going to lose our buildings, et cetera. That is not our issue here. Our issue is whether or not they are abiding by the law or not. And where they are breaking it, glad to see the Building and Safety has moved forward. But this ordinance will go forward in a way that will give us time to continue this ban, while the Planning Commission, which I think has been doing a pretty good job with its public outreach, and I agree with the point that Dennis made, that we should allow more public input on that. I know they have a task force now of four or five commissioners that are going to be looking at this. And I've gotten calls from a number of the commissioners, asking about different issues. And I think they've been doing an excellent job in making sure this will have teeth in court, but also have some ramification for people who break the law, because that's the biggest issue. If we don't have punishments that at least equal how much money they're making on this, they'll just continue to flaunt the law. And if we don't have kind of scorched earth and other sort of language that have long-term effects, people will continue to break the law. And many people who have not been the evil ones think that they should do this now, because they see every building around them doing it. And that is unacceptable for anybody, no matter who they are, to be breaking the law. So thank you, Mr. Weiss. Proud to introduce this with you. Appreciate Mr. Reyes's work on this as well. So with that, we ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Labonge. Mr. Labonge is next. All right, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Members, this is very pressing. And around the city, in all parts of the city where I go, people do express their concerns, and they think they can't even see the buildings anymore. And also, you know what I'd like to hear from, Ms. Hahn?
What?
I'd like to hear from the architects, too. The architects who designed these buildings that all of a sudden have it draped with advertising. I know there's been some things that I have been supported in some specific sign districts, but I think the moratorium will help us sort it out. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Reyes, his Chair of Plum, and Mr. Weiss for his work. But I wanted to hear from the American Institute of Architects sometime, and have them say what they really feel about this here and draping it. So thank you so much. A va, get a motion for the architects, will you?
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the Building and Safety staff if they can come to the table, because I think it would benefit all of us if we just had a feel for where we're at as a city in responding to this situation in our city. And we've got a Building and Safety call up. I know you're catching you off guard here, sir, but I think it's important. This council has passed generated work on some allocation of resources and staff. Are we at a point where we are now categorizing or identifying the legal versus the illegal billboards? Are we there yet?
We are, Dave Lara with the Department of Building and Safety. We are definitely in that direction, sir. We've actually inspected almost 2,000 billboards thus far.
2,000 billboards?
Yes. We have actually a team of about 20 inspectors out there, physically making inspections block by block. As you know, the city's got a lot of square miles, so, you know, it's got a lot to cover. But we feel we've covered a lot of ground. We're moving in highly concentrated areas where these billboards are first, main thoroughfares and the like. And, but we are finding illegal boards. We will have that information together, as I alluded earlier to Councilmember Rosendahl. We'll have that detailed information hereforth coming to the council.
So when we are in a position to work with our city attorney's office, your department, and Public Works, we could be in a position where we, as a city, could take down these illegal billboards and essentially penalize those who conduct themselves illegally by imposing on the city and violating our safety with these billboards that are illegal. We will be in a position to do that.
We will be following the due process with, as we do with any violators of any codes in the city of Los Angeles. But we will move forward to diligently work on that and to attempt to remove as many of those billboards as quickly as possible.
I know I did a verbal motion. It was seconded by my colleagues. We got to come to a place where we can hear from Public Works, hear from your department, and the city attorney's office, how this mechanism will work. I really think those who are brazen enough to take advantage of our city and conduct themselves illegally should be aware they're very serious about taking it down. And they will pay a price. They will be penalized for their legal activity. And how soon do you think we can get to that point?
We should be coming up with a report here very soon. We're hoping that we can come up with some kind of report early this upcoming month of March that will be fully detailed. As I said earlier, Councilman, this is entirely a work of progress because of the number of square miles that the city has. But we do have at least 20 staff members that are diligently pursuing every day various levels of enforcement on these billboards. So we're trying, it's like eating an elephant, one piece at a time.
Right. Well, we don't want you to choke on the elephant here.
No, of course not.
But the fact is, we need to move forward, and we want to see a real implementation arm come into play and exercise our ability to protect our city. So looking forward to that meeting, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, if I could ask the city attorneys who are now here in the planning guy to come on up. Just hold that time for a second. Just want to get some technical questions done. I appreciate everybody coming here. We've got the Planning Department and the city attorney's office here. And you got your hair cut, too. Okay. You've heard the discussion so far. I just want to get a better appreciation of where we are, okay? First, if I could ask, planning, in this process of moratorium, what are the issues you're working on?
Good morning, councilmembers. Michael Legrand, Department of City Planning. We're currently working on drafting permanent regulations at the direction of the council. There was a motion forwarded by a majority of the council. It's particularly Councilmember Weiss, asking us to review the regulations regarding signage and to come up with better enforcement mechanisms, as well as to eliminate some digital billboards, and basically to have a ban on certain types of off-site signage. And we're currently working on those regulations. We presented those to the City Planning Commission. Two separate meetings, most recently last week, we were again at the City Planning Commission meeting. They carefully are weighing this issue. They heard a lot of public testimony comment on this issue, and they create a subcommittee of the City Planning Commission that's further reviewing this issue. And we'll be back again before the City Planning Commission this coming Thursday to discuss kind of a roadmap in terms of getting this ordinance before the city council.
I like the concept of a roadmap, because we really are trying to figure this out. If I could ask the city attorneys at this moment in the moratorium, what are the issues you're working with?
Jerry Burge, City Attorney's Office. We're assisting planning in all of the issues that they are reviewing, including the penalty provisions, and trying to strengthen the penalty provisions, as well as all other issues facing the Planning Commission.
And the penalty provisions, just to help me out on this, you know, in my district, which we did our own, Dennis Hathaway, who's sitting in the audience here with my staff and others, we found 34 illegal billboards. We're not sure when they got up or what the story is. How are we finding ourselves tackling that issue?
Councilmen, again, for the record, Jerry Burge, we recommend that you separately agendize that issue if you want to discuss it, or wait until the permanent regulations are before you. The particulars of the permanent regulations are not before you on the agenda today.
So we'll agendize that, and I'll make sure we do that, because these are questions that my constituents keep asking me every day. What are we doing about those 34 illegals? Are we going to make them, take them down? Are they going to be fine for putting them up? And it goes on and on, the same kind of question. The second issue both of you maybe can help me on is when these somewhat passive billboards became active, meaning they became digital, and they have 10 or 15 commercials on them just rapidly, and it changes every day. When they were historically put up, did anybody discuss in that 2006 settlement or any other forum that there would be revenue streams, or increased revenue streams, or what, and would the city ever participate in that? Was that a historic footnote or not?
Again, Councilman Jerry Burge, for the record, the settlements are not before our council. A discussion of the settlements and discussion of settlements may even be more appropriate for closed session, depending on the nature of the questions. And we would recommend, again, that you separately agendize if you would like to discuss the settlements.
Okay, and that's the second element I do want to separately agendize, because, again, my constituents keep coming up to me, besides talking about the visual blight, it's the safety issue. But more importantly, it's a huge revenue stream that the city should capture a piece of it. So we can agendize that and discuss that in closed session?
If necessary. But I would like to stress that the permanent regulations are coming before you, and we hope they will come before you very soon. And at that time, you will have an opportunity to review the proposed permanent regulations recommended by the Planning Commission and your planning department, and make any amendments that you would like to. At that point in time, it might be more appropriate to review all these issues and determine whether you think the Planning Commission recommendation is appropriate.
That's very good. And as the planner, are they looking at the aspect of what revenue streams could come from that, or just the actual signage going up in the rental of the space?
Michael Legrand, Department of City Planning. Our focus, again, was confined by the amount of information that was in the council motion that we were directed by council to look at. Followed, subsequent to that, we met with the Plum Committee members and got very specific direction from them. So we're really looking at visual blight and visual clutter citywide, whether it's digital, whether it's onsite messages, offsite messages. We're taking the whole issue of signage and tackling that in a very comprehensive ordinance. So I think a lot of the issues you're seeing in terms of penalties and fines, so that there's a real deterrent for illegal activity, will be coming forward to the ordinance that will be before you very shortly.
So final point is, can I make a motion here and say, A, I want to discuss the revenue streams of potential digital, and B, how to deal with illegal signs that are up? Is that appropriate?
Mr. City Attorney, did you want to interject?
I think it would be more appropriate to draft a motion, Rule 16, or a motion that could be referred to committee than attaching it to this extension.
And again, Councilman, if I may interrupt, Jerry Burge, you may want to wait until the permanent regulations are before you, which may address a lot of your questions already.
Okay, so I just bring it out here for the record here, and hopefully, in this process of this moratorium, we continue to address two very pressing issues that my constituents constantly bring up, is a revenue stream for the digital, and what fines would be for the illegals that are up there.
Understood.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next speaker is Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just ask a very specific question on revenue. When we go out either on a legal or illegal board, do we ever check to determine whether the location that it's being cited is paying business tax in the city?
Maybe a more appropriate question for our Department of Building and Safety. I'll have them come up.
Okay. Now, I would just want to, when we go out and inspect a board, whether it's legal or illegal, we know that the company pays business tax. But what about the cited locations, such as either commercial or residential property where it's cited? Are they paying business tax? Because generally, what, is there a lease for the use of their property or something?
Again, Councilman Parks, Jerry Burge, again, I think this is a question that is beyond the scope of the agenda item, which is to extend the interim control ordinance. The finding the council needs to make in order to extend is whether or not the planning department is diligently pursuing the permanent regulations.
I just talked to him on the side, then. Thank you, Jerry.
That would be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, City Attorney. Mr. Parks, there are no further speakers in the queue. So, Madam Clerk, if you're, Mr. Clerk, if you would open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Next item.
Item five was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Mr. Labonge for item five.
Members, we have an opportunity to extend the interim designation by Mayor Antonio Villarreal Rosas, our librarian, who has been serving the city well. Chris Marita, right now, over 30-year veteran of service to the city of Los Angeles. We're most proud of the library department and all that it has done. And Chris, if you could give us a little report right now. I know, members, one thing that we've asked for in the Arts and Parks Committee, and I know Mr. Smith and Mr. Rosendahl will like it, it's to try to help offset the costed cuts. Ms. Hahn and I are working on that with getting friends' groups going in a direction of a positive way. Chris, give us a little opening remarks. And again, thank you for your service. And if you could close by telling me your favorite book all time.
First of all, I want to report that the Los Angeles Public Library is busier than ever before. At any given day, we have approximately 50,000 people visiting our 72 libraries. And approximately, there's 300,000, 300,000 visits to our website every day, on any given day.
So 50,000 people a day, every day?
In person.
In person. That's Dodger Stadium, almost a sellout in every corner of the city. And then 300,000 hits a day on the worldwide web.
Right, at www.lapl.org, right. And the local media and national media have picked up on that story, that the poor economy is driving, you know, thousands of people to the Los Angeles Public Library. Just last week, we had 53 people waiting outside the Los Feliz Library, waiting for the doors to open. So, again, the people are coming to our libraries, to use our books, use our resources, use our public computers, and, you know, do everything to try to enhance their lives. In a few months, we look forward to opening our new Silver Lake Library. And this will be our 36th final branch construction, branch library construction project. And by opening the Silver Lake Library, we will have accomplished an incredible feat. We will have opened 64 libraries in 20 years, a feat that no other library system in the country has done.
Probably in the world.
Probably in the world.
All right, I got to go to the library and check out that fact.
And we're also furthering the mayor's education agenda. We're providing the largest after-school program in the city. And we've developed innovative programs, such as live homework help, where students can get free one-to-one tutoring online every day, grades K through 12, every day of the week, Monday through Sunday, from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. And we've also developed our Student Smart Program, which provides students free workshops on how to do better on the SAT and ACT exams. And we continue to help the people bridge the digital divide. Last year, people spent 6 million hours on our 2,300 public computers, and our library staff conducted 2,500 computer training classes. Our biggest challenge that we see is continuing to provide quality service with less resources. You know, through our user-friendly website, we've been pushing more and more of our services on the web. You know, people can now renew their books on the web, pay their overdue fines on the web, download eBooks and audiobooks and music, and order photographs online. And people can use our services 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So the library has a very dedicated staff. We try to provide excellent customer service, and I'm honored to lead such a staff.
Well, Chris, we're honored to have you. Tell me your favorite book of all time. I'll tell you mine, Mike Mulligan and his steam shovel.
I have lots of books.
All right, lots of books. You're the librarian. You can pick a lot. All right, Chris, we thank you for your service. When they pull it offline, when they pull those pictures down offline, do we charge a service fee for that?
Yes, we do.
And if the picture is a historic picture, has somewhat value to it, do we get compensation for that?
No.
Like the New York Times sells their photographs from their archives.
No, we just have a fee structure to charge.
Right. Maybe you should look at that, some of the great pictures that you have in there from the history of Los Angeles. Recommend an eye vote. Thank you for what you do, Chris, and all the staff over there.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Great intern city librarian.
Thank you. No further speakers in the queue on this item. Would you please open the roll, Mr. Clerk? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 12 ayes. Thank you very much. Fourth with please on that item. Next item.
Item 16, call special for cards.
All right. Our first speaker on this item will be Mr. Dogg, and then followed by Isis.
Boy, is this some fun chambers, Mr. Dogg, Isis. Who's next? Shazam?
Shazam. A, but I'd like to note for the record, and for everybody affected under this rent escrow item, that this was not posted on the website until 1:00 in the morning, and the city's falling into a bad habit of not posting the agenda till 1:00. So I say that all these people are entitled to have this reconsidered. Please comment, stop my clock, please. Okay, I see Dion moving in. Anyway, let me talk about the rent escrow program and the problem, and as candidate for mayor, this is probably the biggest problem that will cause a massive flood of federal lawsuits that are already currently being filed. The city needs to generate revenue. They'll go up to one of these mom-and-pop housing people that are housing, property owners, that are housing low-income renters. Well, gee, the city pretends like they care about low-income renters, and they pretend that they care about the property owners that are housing these people. However, the city cracks down, and they use the rent escrow in a corrupt, racketeering way by making them have to do all these aesthetic improvements that have nothing to do with building and safety. Then the bank says, well, gee, we can't approve these, you know, non-essential improvements, and the city goes, well, gee, you are bad landlords. Now, we are going to be taking the money ourselves. And then the property owner says, well, gee, you know, the city just, you know, is too much, and then they end up having to turn the building over, and then it goes to the preferred developer that flips these low-income rentals that people need so badly affordable into luxury condos nobody can afford. Then they get kicked out onto the streets. And I say we need to do much more with emergency shelters for all the people that will be coming into the streets. And so that's how the City of Los Angeles pretends like they care about renters and property owners, but they're screwing both of them through this fraudulent rent escrow corrupt racket that I say is going to be massive lawsuits. Zuma Dogg for mayor will address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isis.
Before she speaks, Madam President, just for clarification, the Brand Act only requires physical posting. The electronic posting is an additional service provided by the city for greater access to its citizens.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Good afternoon. In terms of the rent escrow REIT program, people just have to look, there'll be more on this than I have to say, but for now, I'll make it short and blunt. Alexandria Apartments slash Alexandria Partners, owned by Amerland Logan Properties, yeah, well, needless to say, the last owner may have been no angel, but by the time CRA got done with the Alexandria slash Amerland, you sure brought in a whole Pandora's Box of trouble. And the LA City has been very, very, let's just say the least, hush, hush about that. They just, last week, paid out 11.9 million to this scumlord, Amerland, who wants to hide behind the name of Alexandria Partners. Now, today, you hear that there were some tenants who have been mistreated, residents who unfairly, by the downtown news, John Regardi makes less of the, these humble people who are worthy people. John Regardi, a message for you, downtown, and for LA City Council and CRA. All people from Alexandria Apartments are not just people you can just say they're all prostitutes, drug addicts.
Madam President, I don't believe they're discussing this item.
Yeah, let me stop the clock. Okay, we all have to ask you to stay on topic, okay? All right, go ahead.
I'm certainly on topic, it's too hot, isn't it? However, the fact of the matter is, there have been so many people at the Alexandria who are silent, who have not spoken up. I, Director of JusticeLeagueForBenevolence.org, do represent Alexandria apartment residents, just the same as LA can, has been active. More on this to come.
There are no further cards on this item, no speakers in the queue, so, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Thirteen ayes. Next item.
Item 19, call special for cards.
Mr. Dogg.
An elector by the City Attorney, item number 22, I should get the additional minute as a supplemental item. Thank you. This is right now, very good, they're talking about extending the termination date for the committee to end poverty for six months. Now, I talked about Dr. Deming and his 14-point management plan. The first thing that he would say here is that, you know, don't come out and say a plan to end poverty, because that's not a realistic goal, and then you look like failures. We should say, let's wake up every day and do everything to reduce poverty as much as possible. So that's the first thing. It's a small thing, but it's important, because it sets the tone. Secondly, if you want to reduce poverty, the first thing I would do as mayor of Los Angeles is make sure there's a lot of nonprofit money, a lot of money from the federal and state government to provide services to the most underserved community, the most poverty-stricken communities. However, through front-end loaded management contracts, and cronyism, and patronage, and racketeering, and corruption, much of the money earmarked for these most in-needs communities ends up getting pilfered and just, you know, sucked out, and then very little of the money makes it into the community. So if you want to end poverty, if you want to reduce poverty, I'm here to tell you that there's millions and millions of dollars every day that the federal and state government is giving you, City Council, the 15 members, and Mayor Antonio Villarosa, you're wasting it, you're pilfering it, it's not making it into the community. Some other things you can do is, to help end poverty, is, you know, let's get some real affordable housing, because the people cannot afford to live in this city. First of all, you want to end poverty, tripling trash collection fees does not help end poverty. Quadrupling the parking meter rates does not help end poverty. Immeasurable waste of money through your mismanagement does not help end poverty. So these are some of the things to reduce poverty. Zuma Dogg will address this with his 14-point plan internationally recognized by Dr. W. Edwards Deming as mayor. Zuma Dogg for mayor.
Thank you very much, and that uses up your time for today. Thank you very much, Mr. Dogg. There are no further speakers in the cards on that item, no speakers in the queue. Madam, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. Next item.
Item 20, call special for cards.
Uh, we have a card from Lucille Caruso.
My card is, oh, I think this had already passed in rereading, and I wanted to comment on something, but it says Women Image Network on February 17th, but this sounds like it's just talking about fees and costs about this, so I think whatever I had to say doesn't apply, but thank you so much.
Thank you very much. No speakers in the queue on this item. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. Next item.
Item 22, call special for cards.
Okay, we don't have any cards on 22. Mr. Dogg has used up his allotment for today, so there are no speakers in the queue on this one. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Friday, March 27th for personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, Mr. Smith is excused, Mr. Rosendahl.
Councilmember.
Oh, I'm sorry, before we go into that, Mr. Parks has.
Yes, I just ask that we reconsider 15 and continue it for two weeks, whenever office meeting regarding that.
So we have to do a motion for reconsideration on that, is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Correct.
All right, first for the motion for reconsideration. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. All right, and then, do you need to make the motion itself on the record, Mr. Parks?
We just ask for two weeks' continuance, and we're going to ask for an office meeting on that issue.
That would be to March 10th.
Okay, so that'll be without objection? Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, great. Close the roll on that one, too. Okay, we'll go back to motions posting and referred, or excuses, I think.
Excuses. Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused March 24th and 25th for personal business. That meets council policy.
All right, Mr. Zein moves, Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Councilmember Zein requests to be excused Wednesday, March 4th, to leave at 11:30 for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Councilmember Cardness requests to be excused February 25th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, February 27th, to arrive at noon for city business. That also meets council policy.
Mr. Huizar moves, Mr. Labange seconds.
That clears the desk.
All right, Members, are there any announcements? Any announcements, Members? Mr. Labange, do you have an announcement?
No, I'm just rising for the inner council.
All right, great. All right, well, then, why don't we all stand for adjourned tributes? Ms. Hahn, do you have an adjourned tribute?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. I would like us to adjourn today in the memory of George De La Torre, who passed away from a very sudden heart attack on February 21st. It was his 72nd birthday. George co-owned Juanita's Foods in Wilmington, which has long been a great, it's been the world's largest manufacturer of menudo and a variety of authentic Mexican food delicacies. It's been in Wilmington as long as I can remember, and provided generations of good jobs at Juanita's. George gave an enormous amount of his time and talents to helping improve the community of Wilmington. He was always a supporter of all the nonprofits in the Wilmington area, and probably never said no to any request that was made to him. He was especially supportive of programs that involved young people. In fact, I just recently went to him last year when we were trying to raise money so that Banning High School Football Team could have new uniforms, and he was the first one I called, and he said absolutely he would help raise the money for the new uniforms and equipment. He served for five years as a very effective chair of the Port of Los Angeles Wilmington Community Advisory Committee, and several more years as a dedicated member and spokesperson for that group. It was just last year, the entire community came together to name the lobby of Banning's Landing, which is really the largest community center in Wilmington, after George, and he was there with his whole family, and I look back on that now and think, what a great time that was for all of us to actually get to say to him everything that we felt about him while he was still alive, to enjoy it. I'm so glad that we did that. He's survived by his sweet wife, Lee, his mother, Elsie Morales, three children, Mark, Aaron, and Gina, and seven grandchildren. George was a class act with a big heart, and he was such a vital part of the community of Wilmington. He will be dearly missed by everyone. His services are scheduled for Friday, February 27th, 10:30 a.m., Mary Star of the Sea. I believe that's why I was asked to be excused. I will want to be there representing the community at that service. We will miss George.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Huizar.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues asked that we adjourn today in honor of Martha Jane French-Giwi. She is the mother of LA DOT Central District Engineer Martha Stevenson and retired DWP Executive Jerry Giwi. She passed away on Tuesday, January 27th. She had been brought home from the hospital that afternoon and passed away in her sleep later that night. Martha Jane was born on April 23rd, 1921. Her husband, Robert Alexander Giwi, preceded her in death on August of 2003. She leaves behind three children, Jerry, Martha, and her daughter Anne, four grandchildren and two great-grandchildren, and they will all miss her greatly. Her service was held at Forest Slum.
I'll second that. Thank you. And that's a second by Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask for adjourned, in memory of Brad Van Pelt, who played with the Los Angeles Raiders after a five-time All-Pro career at the New York Giants, All-American from Michigan State, 57 years old, tragically young man. Wayne Thomas, 77, was the studio announcer at KHJ, most famous for red light, green light for engineer Bill. Wayne Thomas passed. And also, I ask for adjourned memory of Julianne Carpenter, who was the past president of the Miracle Mile Residents Association, died too young, grew up in Saratoga, California, went to USC, and was a wonderful, wonderful member of the Community Miracle Mile Residents Association. I asked you to join me in that.
Yeah, I'd like to second that one with Mr. Labange.
Survived her husband, Tristan, her father, Roy, and her stepmother, Greg. And, Members, I also ask for adjourned memory of Janet Whitkin.
Whitkin.
Who was a tremendous one for the alternative, living for the aging, who came up with a concept, who said.
All members.
We should put people together, when you get aged, you sometimes leave an environment, and to go to those environments, what she created, you really found community, you really found home, you felt if your parents ever needed a place to be, that was the place to be. Our parents always had homes in that situation, the Labanges', but for all that that she did, she truly was a wonderful person. She was 62 years old, and cancer claimed her life. She's truly an angel in the City of Angels, she's with the angels now.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And we're going to have all members on it. She was a tremendous human being. Anybody who met her, I'm sure, never forgot her, or the beautiful work that she did on behalf of so many seniors in our city. Mr. Parks, did you have one, Ms. Virginia? Okay, Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to add fond memories of Janet. I was able to meet some of their tenants, visited some of their housing facilities, actually sat down with many of the tenants, they talked about the whole family atmosphere that was created by her energy, and the kind of challenges she took on. There's a lot to be learned from how she approached the difficulties of creating housing facilities for seniors and just people who were in need, and we're going to miss a tremendous person in our city, because she always looked out for those who were never in a position to really speak for themselves, and she was able to generate that kind of advocacy for them, so we're going to miss her deeply. And I just wanted to add, if I could be added to Ms. Stevenson's commemoration? Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
And I'd just like to also add that we don't talk about it much, but as a role model she was, as an open lesbian to the gay and lesbian community, she was quite a leader, and, you know, people need to know that we're everywhere and making positive change and contributing to society, and from the gay and lesbian perspective, we are so honored to have had such a role model.
Yeah. Mr. Zein. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, a great matriarch. My barber's mother, Raphael's mother, just passed away. She was 95 years old, and she was an incredible lady. She was born October 5th, 1914, in a small working ranch in Mexico. She was 95 and died on February 5th at Brantman Medical Center due to a stroke she suffered in June of 2006. Offended at a very young age of three, her childhood was very difficult, filled with what we now know as abuse and scarcity of normal family life. As a young girl, she had many responsibilities, helping with daily chores of a working ranch. At age 22, she married a ranch hand and construction worker. Their marriage produced 10 children, of which only four survived, of which Raphael was one of the four. The couple tried their hand at making a living as a farmers, but they found they couldn't get it together there, it was tough, and it was poor and dry seasons. So in 1946, they sold all their possessions and properties and decided to try their luck by moving northward to the city of Tijuana in Baja, California. But in 1964, Miss Virginia, as she was called, husband and children, immigrated to the city of Los Angeles, settling down on the west side, where they lived for over 42 years. She was a homemaker her entire life and an active member of various church groups, especially at St. Augustine. She saw the birth and growth of three generations, widowed after 58 years of marriage, outlived her husband by 15 years. Miss Virginia is survived by four sons, 10 grandchildren, 11 great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zein.
Thank you. To add to Mr. Labange, and all of us adjourned in honor of Janet Whitkin, I have some additional information. I attended the last two banquets. The first year was with Mr. Reyes, being honored by the organization. This last year, she always had a lovely dinner, a big fundraiser down in Santa Monica at Shutter's, where the owner of Shutter's sponsored and paid for all of the festivities. Janet Whitkin was born December 7th, 46, in Chicago, eldest of two children, Martin and Gloria. Whitkin, when she was one, her family moved to Los Angeles. Her father eventually opened San Fernando Hardware and Sporting Goods. In the late '60s, Janet graduated from UCLA with a bachelor's degree in English and speech, also earned a master's degree in education and sociology from UCLA. Janet, who was a young adult, questioned why seniors did not have more independent living options, and then founded an organization in 1978 to pioneer the concept in Los Angeles. And she passed away Saturday at 62. Was the executive director of the nonprofit Alternative Living for the Aging, died of breast cancer at a family member's home in Burbank, resident of Glendale. Started out by setting up roommate matching services for seniors who wanted to stay in their homes, then created co-op housing units that enabled group living among the elderly. Between 1982 and 91, the organization opened five renovated or newly constructed rental cooperatives in the west Los Angeles area that were designed to give to give dozens of low and middle-income seniors independence through Independence, a catch raise Whitkin regularly employed in interviews. Also established a free service that matches seniors who want to share their home with another individual. Since its inception in nineteen seventy-nine, the program has paired nearly eight thousand people in a process that involves counseling and crafting personality profiles of potential roommates. She was trained as a teacher, learned to write grants, and tried out her vision for alternative senior living on members of Temple, Isaiah, and West Hollywood, West Los Angeles, where she was a committed volunteer. Created a lasting impact by emphasizing the importance of housing for seniors. Will be deeply missed by her family and friends, survived by her brother Ralph, her partner, Jane Goldberg, and a daughter, a son, and former partner, Loretta Cohen. Services are being held today, three p.m., Hollywood Forever Cemetery on Santa Monica Boulevard, and the family suggests donations to offer living for the aging in lieu of flowers. May she rest in peace by all council members, Janet Whitkin.
Thank you very much for giving Ms. Whitkin the tribute that she richly deserved, and I'm glad that we're all signing on. Anyone who ever saw any of her projects would hope that their, seniors of their district could live in something as beautiful as what she did. This is a tremendous loss for the entire city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Clerk, if you would call the roll.